Okay, the first item of business tonight was a public hearing that had been advertised. This was a second hearing for the Hutchinson Estate request for a partial rezones from A1 to, A1C to R2 for property located at zero Happy Valley Road, Rossville, tax parcel zero dash one oh two dash zero zero two. The first public hearing was on February the 20th of 2020, and this was going to be the scheduled second public hearing. The developers of this project had reached out to our office and had requested that we hold off and postpone this public hearing until they could come forward with additional information on this project. And at that time, we will re-advertise this, and we will let the public be given notice, and we'll follow this up with another public hearing forthcoming in the weeks ahead to be determined once they come back with additional information. But at this time, there is no action on that, and there's no need for us to go to the time of letting people speak on that because they're not here to present their presentation, and we will do that all at one time in the future. So, is there any questions about that? Okay, we'll move over into our regular scheduled meeting. It's Thursday, February the 27th, and we do have the minutes from our previous meeting, and I think they're about twenty-something pages long. Had quite a good meeting last time. And so those minutes are there, and our staff's done a good job going through those and making sure for those accuracy of those. And then also, that was recorded, so we'll sign these into the record at this time to make these official. These are all the signing sheets from that. Under our old business, Robert Wilson requests a conditional use variance for property located at 5665 Highway 193 Flintstone, Georgia, tax parcel zero dash five oh six dash one dash zero two six. At the last meeting on January 23rd, we tabled this and asked for Mr. Wilson to work with the planning office to develop a vegetation barrier for this property. They were here at our last meeting and had entered into an agreement with the planning office and had signed off on it, but after they had further review and discussion among themselves, they asked that we table it once again. So David Brown, our zoning director, and myself met with them out there one day last week and went over a plan that they were satisfied with, that met the requirements that we needed for the vegetation. So this is a letter, says per the request for the conditional use variance for tax map and partial zero dash zero three five zero two six, Commissioner Whitfield asked that we work with the planning office to develop a vegetation barrier for this property. Planning office recommends the following. Location one, north end of the site, from the rear fence west, 170 feet, with a six-foot privacy fence stops near the first power pole. Location two, west side of Highway 193, starting at 12 feet south of the first entrance with two rows of approved trees staggered inside the existing fence and traveling 228 feet to the concrete pad. Location three, concrete pad will be a variance of 56 feet. Reason for that, the concrete pads sits right up on their fence line, and to keep off of the DOT right-of-way, we're going to give them a 56-foot variance where they would not be required to have the vegetation. Location four, south of the location number three of the concrete pad, you will start a concrete, you will start at the concrete pad and plant approved trubs, excuse me, trees staggered inside the existing fence for 44 feet to the existing cross fence running east, existing chain-link fence to be replaced with a matching wooden fence. Number five, plant two rows of approved trees staggered inside the fence for 70 feet east. Please see the attached map and approved vegetation barrier requirements. If you have any questions or concerns. So this was signed by our planning director, and also today, the Wilsons came by the planning office and did sign off and agreed to this plan. So at this time, based off the recommendations of the planning office, I'm going to approve this plan and allow them to move forward. We have a couple of proclamations tonight that we're going to read, and our first one is, says by the Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, proclamation Intellectual Disability, excuse me, Intellectual Development Disability Awareness Month, whereas intellectual development disabilities is a condition affecting an estimated 4.6 million American childrens, adults, and their families, and whereas the most effective weapon for alleviation of this serious problem associated with intellectual development disabilities are public knowledge and understanding, and whereas the potential for citizens with intellectual development disabilities to function more independently and productively must be fostered, and whereas the Lookout Mountain Community Services improves the quality of life for the citizens of Walker, Day, Chautauqua, and Catoosa County by providing services to persons with intellectual development disabilities and their families, and whereas the citizens of Walker County are urged to give their full support to effect enabling people with intellectual development disabilities to live productive lives and achieve their potential. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim March of 2020 as Intellectual Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Walker County. Signed and sealed the 27th day of February 2020. So we have some other copies here that I'm going to sign as well. Who all do we have here with us tonight for this? If y'all would like to come forward, please, and we want to present this and get a photo with y'all. If y'all want to just come over here to the side. Lookout Mountain Community Service does an outstanding job in our community, working with our citizens, and we like to every year bring attention and awareness to this, and so we have some of our participants and some of the leaders within Lookout Mountain Community Services, so we want to present them with this. Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you.
So let's come on over here a little closer. We're going to let you in the middle. Let's do this one. We're going to let you hold this right here, so we're going to get you the picture, we're going to get the paper, okay? All right, y'all ready? All right, on three. One, two, three. Thank you for coming, appreciate you being here. Here's some additional copies to take with me, so thank you very much. Appreciate y'all being here. It's always good to do these proclamations and bring attention to things that are important in our community. Okay, we've got another extremely important proclamation that we're going to read, and then we're going to ask for a photo op, and everyone that is in support of this, even if you didn't know we were going to do this tonight, we're going to ask you to come up. We've got the, we're going to call this the choir loft, and we're going to ask everybody to come up here and gather so we can get a big group picture. So it's my honor and pleasure by the Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation, Second Amendment Awareness and Celebration Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America is the supreme law of the land, and the Second Amendment to the Constitution guarantees to individuals the rights to carry and bear arms in a manner that shall not be infringed, and whereas OCGA 1-2-6-A-9 lists the rights to keep and bear arms among the rights of the citizens of the state of Georgia without limitation, and whereas the Commissioner of Walker County wishes to express his opposition to any law, regulation, or other act that would infringe on the Second Amendment rights of Walker County citizens, and calls upon the Georgia Legislature and the United States Congress to preserve, uphold, and protect the rights of all citizens to keep and bear arms under the United States Constitution, and to reject any provision, law, or regulation that may infringe on these rights. And whereas Walker County is a rich in generational respect and reverence of these scarred rights dating back to the formation of the county in 1833, the surrounding of such, excuse me, the surrendering of such rights by our citizens only serves to strip away at our time-honored culture traditions, and whereas the citizens of Walker County derive economic and social benefit from all, from all safe forms of firearms, recreation, hunting, and shooting conducted within Walker County. Whereas the, whereas there is approximately 8,000 Georgia weapon-carry license holders in Walker County and countless other residents who own firearms for hunting and protecting of their homes and loved ones. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, Commissioner of Walker County, proclaim March the 1st through the 7th as Second Amendment Awareness and Celebration Week, to recognize the importance this freedom and rights have on our community, and to publicly acknowledge and to reiterate support for the rights provided by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, signed and sealed the 27th day of February this year of 2020. Yeah. So it's with great honor and pleasure to sign this into the official record, the 27th day of February 2020. We have some additional copies here. This is, again, it's been a great honor to do this and to participate in this, and it's been with collaboration from Sheriff Wilson, who's been involved in this and very supportive of this, and we appreciate him being here with us tonight to celebrate this time. Well, I want to give a shout-out to Robert and to Joe. They've done a lot of work to make sure we got the wording of this just right and make sure that we can all be proud of this proclamation. And also, Roy has been very instrumental in leading this effort to bring attention to the Second Amendment rights of our citizens in Walker County, and so we would like for everyone that is supportive of this, if y'all want to come up here in this area, and Roy, we ask you to come up front here with us. We've got a lot of copies of this, and we want to get a photo with everyone. Even if you didn't come, didn't even know you were going to do this tonight, if you're in support of this and want to have your picture made.
We can make two rows here.
So, Roy, what should I do?
Yeah, you can down, cause Roy.
And so we've got extra copies, so we'd like anyone, especially the ones on the front row, if you'd like a copy of this. Okay. Who else wants a copy? We're going to want you to hold these up. Make sure he gets one. Maybe you can have to do a double row, I know it's going to get tight. We're trying to get everybody in. Nancy, why don't you come along and start it? Don't just walk there. Yeah. Thank you. That's a rare thing for anybody to do. Go down around to the other side. Okay. Got it, everybody? Okay, does everybody know the first verse of the song? Nice song. All right. Thank you for doing this. I hope that you all will be able to listen. Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Everybody did a good job. Okay. Glad to see you. Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Everybody did a good job. Okay. Glad to see you. Thank you. I think it's great. Thank you.
I think it's a mark.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Roy. I'm sure we get you one, absolutely.
Okay, please go. Listen, I want to do that. I wanted to recognize Roy here tonight. Roy has been really the spearhead and has been the one that has worked with our team and myself at the office and has done an outstanding job. He's been super professional, very courteous, very positive, and very pro to get this done, and so I've asked him if he wanted to speak for a few minutes to do so because I've gained a lot of respect for him, and I appreciate everything that he's done here.
Okay, Roy Hambrik. I didn't come prepared for this. First off, I just want to tell everybody how much I appreciate the community of coming out and supporting this cause. I feel the same way about this issue, that this shouldn't even be anything that we should even be discussing here in this country at the moment. Most of the people that know me know that I have a political side that I kind of keep personal, but if anybody, if anybody would have come up to me, you know, a couple months ago and said, "I'm going to be standing right here," I would have told you it was absolutely crazy. Well, outside of my comfort zone, and like I said, I am a working-class citizen, just like everybody in here, and I got very tired of watching and listening and seeing the attacks on everyday citizens in this country, and I decided that I wasn't going to be silent any longer, and I was going to stand up, and I had some great, close people around me that jumped up there with us and decided that they wanted to help, and we got hooked up with some great people in the surrounding counties, and this is just completely blown up to just a huge, huge deal in Georgia. And we all, to me, the wake-up call was Virginia and what was going on in Virginia. And as we were looking at Virginia, legislation was being literally introduced in our own state, and I believe that we were so comfortable in our bubble that where we live and our way of life, we never thought that something like this could happen, and here it is on our doorstep. And I've had so many people ask me, "Why, you know, this will never pass, you know, why are you doing this?" You know, and I'm like, "Well, for starters, just like Tyler Martin said from the Whitfield County, he said, 'If not me, then who?'" And my first and foremost goal with this whole movement is community, and people are like, "Well, you're going to the streets, you're going to the communities." I don't reach out to a lot of people like media, and, you know, I want the community to be involved because it takes us all, and we all know that 2020 is going to be a tough year in politics. And if we don't take a stand, I had this conversation today with a close friend of mine who hates politics, and I told him, I said, "Look, if you, if you understand where we're at as a country now, and you understand the changes that were, three years ago were coming about in this nation, you'd understand that it's time that we got involved." And I'll be honest, I voted for Mr. Whitfield, and I think he's done great things for our county. I mean, absolutely amazing thing. This team, and we are blessed to have Sheriff Wilson for as long as we've had, he's taken such good care of our county. But if you, if I went into the voting booth and I knew who the president was, and I might know who the governor was, but when it gets down to your county officials and your city officials, you're sitting here going, "Well, which one's which?" You know, I'll mark a name. Well, it's time that we stop doing that, and we start holding our elected officials accountable to the people, and we start learning about the systems, and we start supporting our elected officials, because that's what it's all about. There are people just like us, and we all sit back and they think, "Well, these, this is a different group." No, these are the same people as a community, and we can come together over things like this, and we can accomplish it, but we can't do it without community. So, thank you, and we'll keep going.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
All right. Okay, we have, the next item on our agenda, number three, is a purchase order, 2020-689 for a Bobcat E85 excavator for the Public Works Department. Okay, Carlin, you did slide in. Carlin, I'm going to call for you, call upon you, and if you could give us a little background of need for this equipment and the research and testing and all that y'all have done to come to this recommendation.
The need comes from three of our grade oils we do a lot of our ditching with, they're built-in settings. One of them, you know, I had followed around with oil dry trucks. The newest one we have is, I think, probably a 2000 model or so, it's got, currently needs about a $20,000 repair to it. We're not 100% that would fix the problem, so this is the most affordable way we continue with our ditching. This machine's got a tilt-rotator with gravel on it. That's something kind of new. Looking through, sort of talking with a few other counties, not a whole, some, a lot of counties are using mini excavators for ditching now, the tilt-rotator's something that's kind of getting integrated into, into that type of work, you know, and we'll, we'll see how it does, but the real need is just for our ditch work. Being able to use an excavator instead of grade oil on some of our smaller roads, more confined, we don't have to close down the entire road to run our, this machine. We can still keep one lane of traffic open, most of the time, there's still going to be the occasion. It's just pretty much a need that we have to, we could afford, and we had to make, so...
All right, thank you. And I know y'all looked at several different models, and you actually got to demo this in real-life experience over, over in Flintstone, didn't you?
We did, we used this to replace the culvert over on All Good Road. We demoed a wheeled excavator from Volvo, it just, it took 45 minutes to get it five miles down the road, so that was obviously not the best thing. I mean, I, it was great, but it's just too slow. This, we can trailer, get around a whole lot faster. As far as keeping our weights right, looked at a few other brands, just, but the size of the machine and everything, this was the best fit. So yeah, we've done, done a lot of calling around and checking in different, just visiting a few places and looking at some other machines, and this was the best fit.
Okay, one of the exciting things about this is we actually have this in our budget to buy some equipment this year and to be able to pay cash for it. So that's something that we have continued to do over the last three-plus years, and anything that's over a $15,000 investment purchase that we do in the county now, we bring it to the public to let the public know how we're investing the tax dollars for the benefit of the county. And that's a resolution that we put in place back in early 2017 to hold our local county government accountable for any of these type purchases over $15,000, and to be able to come and have open dialogue about it and have the department or elected official that's involved in that process to be able to come and speak and answer any questions and to explain what we're doing. But we've talked to several other counties, and we are finding that this is probably one of the most versatile pieces of equipment to be able to use for a lot of different things. We end up working around a lot of tight areas and narrow right-of-ways, and when you're bringing out a large excavator that's on tracks, then you're taking the chance of doing damage to your asphalt unless you're laying down wood or pads or something, and so these, this machine has the rubberized track system on it, and with all the attachments that we're getting, this would be a piece of equipment that we can use on a daily basis. Where the big older grade oil units, they're very good at ditching, but it's a challenge to do much else with them. And so being able to move into a more versatile excavator that's more of a medium-sized piece of equipment is going to be a big benefit to our Public Works Department. So we're going to go ahead and approve this purchase order so we can move forward with Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is just going to be tabled, that's on the property for the Hutchinson Estates, there's no action there. The next item, number five, is an ACC Georgia County Internship Program, and this is an intern grant, where this will take and pay $12 an hour for 40 hours a week work over the summer for a college student to come be an intern. This is a very competitive grant, and we've applied for it three consecutive years and have been awarded this grant every year, and even last year, we was awarded two grants. We had one that was a legal intern and also one, it was a public relations intern that worked with Joe. So this is all the documentation, this covers the matching taxes, it covers their workers' comp, and provides the funding for them to work up to 200 hours over the summer as a summer intern. So this person, once they're interviewed and whoever's selected to be hired, will be working with David Gottlieb directly and working throughout the summer on a paid internship. So we're very appreciative to the Association of County Commissioners and very excited to be able to accept this grant on behalf of Walker County. Any questions on this? This is all just the additional details and the application and all that was turned in. This is all just the additional details and the application and all that was turned in. Okay, that's the last item on our agenda, officially adjourned our meeting, but as always, we allow anyone to come up and speak that would like to make public comment from the floor, to myself and the staff. We just ask that you limit your comments to, to five minutes, and we ask that you limit your topic to something pertaining to Walker County. We can't fix all the international problems out there, so use your time wisely. And anything that you would like to talk about that deals with Walker County, we just ask you to come to the podium, so we can capture your comments on video, so the viewers at home can, can take part of this. And so, who would like to be first? Yes, sir, Roy, if you want to come on up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one thing, I wanted to address you guys, Roy Hamrick, and the audience here, is, we had planned on having some flyers to distribute after the meeting, but if anybody, the county that, that doesn't know about it, on this coming Saturday, is a rally in Armerchi at the Community Center. And it's going to start promptly about 3 o'clock. And there's going to be a lot of people there that's going to be speaking, there's going to be several counties there that's going to be set up with booths and all kinds of information about voting, and things, ways to get involved, voter registration, I mean, it's going to be an awesome, awesome rally. And it's happening on the 29th, and I apologize, because we were going to pass out some flyers after, but we didn't get them in time up here. But, and also, the, the man that's putting it on is actually here, Mr. Bill Buoni. And so, anybody that wants information, we're going to continue to post it between now and Saturday. But we're here, and we'll be here after the meeting, and if anybody doesn't know about it, you know, come find me, or Bill, or anybody with their shirts on, and we'll tell you all about it. But it's going to be a great, great, great thing for the county. I mean, it's going to be awesome, so. And then you guys, spread the word, because we're only on Facebook, and that way, people that aren't on Facebook, that, that, that may not know about it, let your friends, your family know, because this is something huge for Walker County, where people can come and get involved, and learn about politics, and listen to people speak. So, I just wanted to publicly announce that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Ray C. Burnfinch. That's like a burned fish, and it's Irish, first class. Now, some folks want to put S-T-E-I-N on that, and occasionally, it may come, I may come across that way. Commissioner Whitfield, and distinguished elected officials and appointed officials, and fellow citizens, my distinguished fellow citizens and friends of Walker County, Georgia. I've just been invited at some future date to, by Ms. Susan.
Nancy Burr.
Nancy, to address the Republican, Walker County Republican Committee. I'm not much of political activist, I think I've stated this before, but I do enjoy, I have some public speaking experience, and actually, I have been a Republican since Abraham Lincoln established the party. But I've explained before, both of my great-grandfathers served under both, both of these flags. And right here in Walker County, and this is what does relate to Walker County, Georgia, and how it relates. And so, we have, in March of 2012, my wife and I incorporated two corporations here in the state of Georgia. One of them was Bluebird Hollow Farm, and we're getting on the international map with attention. We're just overhauling and editing and updating our website, which is one of the most beautiful. We're connected with the North American Bluebird Society, which is bringing us great, great attention. We're going to bring people in here from all over the country to love bluebirds and study bluebirds. But I want to discuss just a, a couple of, three initiatives that we have. We also have another nonprofit, and as of last year ago, February the 19th, we were given 501(c)(3) status, a public charity. We're registered as a public charity, and we're raising funds with two or three initiatives right now. And with the cooperation, actually, of the Bank of the Fed. We had a, a patron last week that received today, by UPS delivery, straight to their farm, and it was drop shipped to them, a cast iron farm-sized dinner bell, that's the F2 size, the dinner bell on a cast iron, and it's a patriotic issue with raised lettering going around the bowl that says, "Let Freedom Ring", July the 4th, 1776. Now, how does that relate to the common man? How does that relate, why do, would you want a farm-sized dinner bell? According to Emerson, in a poem, or a song actually, it was written by Emerson, called "The Concord Hymn", and he said it was the embattled farmer at Concord Bridge in Lexington, Massachusetts, that fired the shots heard round the world. And so, also, we're commemorating our agricultural community. We're having the drawing, actually, what this is all about. We're asking for $5 donations to enhance our abilities, financial abilities in this corporation to do the good works that we need to be doing, the charitable works. For one thing, we support this North American Bluebird Society, it is a nonprofit. And it's an educational endeavor, and so, but I want to explain a little bit, this is one of our newer ideas right here. And we have just actually become distributors for the National Outdoor, it's outdoor cap. They're very quality caps. But this is just our general idea. This is actually a classic Kevin Smith edition. Kevin has one of these, and he's wearing it proudly, and he loves it. And Kevin has very recently, most of y'all know him, he's just a great guy. You won't talk to him until, and when he, when you depart, and he gives his salutation, "God bless you, and God bless America." And that's what he will tell you. But this has very great significance, especially right here in Walker County with the battlefield here. The battlefield draws millions, and I don't know what the statistics are of the annual, annual people that come to visit this battlefield. And it's kind of sad to say, but to honor, but it would not exist without that flag right there. And it takes both flags, and just as some of us are advocates of gun control, gun, not gun control, but mainly Number Two Amendment, I'm an advocate for this flag to be flying on the same pole right below, just as I have them displayed here. They should fly actually in every battlefield in this country. And I just really believe that. But we're asking $20 for our donation to go, and I already have several of these sold. I'm just taking orders, because I don't have a whole storehouse full.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Just a question. Would you prefer to go to Georgia Island for another meeting, or you want to address it?
Yeah, it'd be in our next meeting, we'll get that on the agenda. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Sure. Yeah, if anybody wants to stay for photos of additional, however you want to do it, group, small group, however you want to do it, be happy for y'all to stay and do that, and you can use the facility here, so, yeah, great idea. Anyone else? All right, well, we appreciate everyone coming out, it's been a great evening, it's been four wonderful calls. And be sure and remember about this weekend coming up over in Western Armerchi Valley at the Community Center, and, and look forward to seeing you over there then. And everyone have a safe night, and look forward to seeing you next, next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, friends, thank you for coming.